Meeting back to order, we previously met in closed session. And we were done with that, so calling back to order here and getting started, and if you're able, please stand with me and go through the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a redeeming justice for all.
Thank you. And tonight, we have some sharp-looking FFA members here tonight to present on the school FARM, the school farm. So floor is all yours, guys, take it away.
Hello, I am Darby Tran, I'm one of the FFA's co-presidents.
My name is Sukie Gattika, and I'm one of the FFA chapter's co-vice presidents.
Hey, I'm Chase Prindle, and this is my first year in FFA.
And we're just gonna be talking about some of the farm projects that we have been working on as a chapter and as individual members.
So the Christmas tree farm is by far one of my favorite events. We have planted over 500 Christmas trees in the past four years. And part of the reason that it's one of my favorite events is that I have three SAEs in FFA, which are supervised agricultural experiences. So I have a dairy one, one for goats that I'll talk about a little bit later, and one that is about ag education. And it's just a, it's something that we do with our kindergarteners every year. We're planning on doing it in May this year. And being able to teach them about ag and talking about ag literacy is very important because we want to be able to make connections with our community that will help these kids build bonds with different programs that they will love forever, and hopefully they'll want to stay with our community forever.
One of our next projects is raising chickens and having hazelnut tree farm. So we got a chicken coop from Mr. Ganji, he built it for us and is donating it to us, so a huge shout out and thank you to him. And so we are going to have chickens, and we're going to build chunnels that kind of go off of the hut so that the chickens can go around the hazelnut tree farm, and they can go around the trees so that when they poop and they can fertilize the trees. And so the whole thing will just be kind of a positive feedback loop for the chickens to help fertilize the trees and help the hazelnut trees grow. And then when the hazelnuts eventually produce hazelnuts and they fall, the chickens can then eat those. So it's just a big thing for us also to hopefully have some kids be able to develop their own supervised agricultural experience with the chickens and to help produce eggs and just help kids be more involved within the FFA through this individual program.
Uh, we have been doing quality meats program for four years, and this year we'll have roughly four kids doing sheep, goat, and pigs. Uh, for, the reason why we do the quality meats program is to help get kids in the farm and learn how to do some agricultural work. The reason we do this is because, well, if kids don't have the resources to be on the farm and say money to get the animals and help, we pay for the animals and we pay for all the expenses, and if they make it to auction, they, with all the money that they get from it, they can pay the FFA membership back and get, take all the profit from their animal.
Uh, this is our newest project, and it's one that we've been working on since about the beginning of February, I'd say. Um, this, so we recently went to Humbird, Wisconsin, and we purchased 11 goats. And our plan is to raise these goats to be able to clear out the buckthorn in our school forest because it is invasive. Um, this would be a perfect thing for other members to do as SAEs. We think it's gonna take about three years to get it all organized, but having members join now would really help set them up further in the future, especially for our younger members like Chase who are freshmen right now. Um, by the time it's around November and October, we're gonna sell these goats so that way the people who work with them now get to split the profit from these goats.
Uh, every year we do a corn maze. Unfortunately, this year we're not able to due to just changing our crops around. And uh, because of that, it's for soil regrowth, and it helps our soil gain back the fertilization. And when we do the corn maze, it really helps us with our educational purposes 'cause we have a few houses in the corn maze to help chi, kids learn how to do like dairy things. Uh, I think we have some beef and livestock in there too. It's really fun for all the families that come.
And then one of our last major projects is starting an apple orchard, and it's not on here, but we have also started a bee farm that has been around for a couple of years now. So starting the apple orchard, we're gonna just plant new trees and have that orchard in here. I think some of the trees are planted now or will be planted soon. And then with our bee farm, it was started a couple of years ago by a senior named Emma Johnson, and she was able to get it started for members now that have taken it over since she has graduated. So they're able to harvest honey and just do their bee production and keep these bees alive. And then the bees also help and give back to the community and the rest of the farm with pollination. So it's a really great agricultural experience for the kids that are doing it now and the people who've done it in the past. And now we can keep on building with this apple orchard and bee farm for kids in the future.
Do you guys have any questions?
What did you do with your bees this winter?
Um, I don't really work with the bees, but from what I heard from the students that do work with them, we, I think we store them uh, someplace so that way they could hibernate. Uh, we did get a decent amount of honey this year, uh, 'cause I did help sort through that. And it was a very sticky mess, but it was very fun, and I got to try some of it. Um, but we are able to sell the honey, and we just, we may buy new bees depending on if some of them died during the hibernation. But I think what we do is we just store them somewhere during the winter.
You all talked about your SAE projects, so your supervised agriculture education experience projects. And can you elaborate, um, for those who don't know, why that is important and what that process looks like? You've mentioned keeping profits from the goats or your pigs or things that you're gonna have over there for the fair. So can you tell us a little bit about why that's important in your, in the FFA program?
Um, well, FFA is a inter-curricular program, so there's three parts of it. And one of the, so it's FFA, classroom and laboratory, and SAE. The SAE is something that's supposed to help you build skills that will, that you will use, um, in the future. The agricultural industry is very big, and there's a wide variety of jobs that you guys may not even know that are part of the agricultural industry. So by doing these SAEs and helping students set them up, we're hoping that we can help, um, we can help get them ready for their future careers. Do you wanna add something?
SAEs are also just a big way to get people more involved in like an agricultural career. So say I want to become a vet when I'm older, having my SAE as a dairy production is a great way to help me into that step of becoming into a vet, and same with other people, having these SAEs going into a career in agriculture or something else is just a great way to do that. Mr. Meyer always likes to do a story about how this guy said he wasn't gonna do anything agriculture-related and became a banker, but then he ended up having to go onto a dairy farm and figure out finances for that farm. So just like that, doing an SAE within agriculture can help in ways like that.
Can you, can you expand on the financial component a little bit about that? Are, are any of you running for getting your state degrees or running for state office? So can you expand a little bit about that and what that looks like on your application, why you would need those things? There, there's a, there's a money component there.
Yeah, so we're both filling out our FFA state degrees this year. Um, and part of that is you have to show, um, how your SAE has improved you. So working at a job is a big part of it, and you have to be able to prove to the FFA that you are working there. So with the finances, I work at Four Hands Holsteins, and so I take all of my bake statements and I just add it into there. Um, do you wanna?
Another big part of it is adding all your assets and liabilities. So for people who are in college and filling out their state degree, having the liability of college debt and things such as that, or with us doing our beef production too, having that liability to the farmer that we need to pay him back at the end of year is also a huge thing with that.
I think what Shar may have been asking is, do you know the, um, basic criteria to earn your state degree? What the monetary value is in order to even qualify?
I wasn't asking that, but thanks.
Oh, you weren't?
I thought that's what you were trying to get him to say.
No.
What's the minimum requirements, I think? I think, um, other people would like to know, even if Shar didn't. Do you remember?
Um, like just with cost or all the requirements, are you asking?
Well, you remember you have to have a financial requirement and/or hours invested.
Yeah, you have to have, I think it's around fi, uh, 1,500 to maybe $2,000 invested. Or it's about 20 to 50 hours maybe. I'm not exact, um, but just things like that. And then they, without the financial comon, component, they have to look at what things you have done at like the state level and national level in FFA, not just at your local chapter level. And they also look at your SAE, and if you have improved, like Sukie was saying, and they go over all of that. And you find areas within your SAE, and you fill it out and say what you have done and how you apply your SAE into a real-world context.
Fantastic. And the farm, the farm is helping you guys do those things and fulfilling those obligations for those applications and your goals in, in that endeavor, right? So, um, it, it's such a great experience for you guys, so.
Well, I was gonna say, I'm sitting between two FFA icons here, but I wanna know more about the goats.
Icon, right.
You bought goats, or the, the program did, right?
Yeah, um, we-
And we have them now, or?
We do. We have them in the ag room right now because it's too cold to have them up in the shed, and we don't have our electricity on.
So does somebody come in on weekends and feed and water them and?
Um, so we actually are feeding them about three times a day right now. So I, I CTE and have a farm class with Mr. Meyer right now for, for my first two blocks. So we feed them about eight in the morning-ish, eight to eight-thirty, and that's their first feeding. And then their second feeding is during warrior time, so at the end of the day after all our classes, so that's around like 2:40. And then their last feeding for the night is at 7:30. And even when we don't have sto, like school, we still have to come in and feed them because they will be hungry.
And the weekend's a long time to go without eating.
Yes.
But there are, there are literally people that have like mobile goats, like goats on the go, right? For buckthorn, um, control, for invasive species control. So this is like, could be a potential if somebody really liked this, like this could set them up for an experience to a really good business, so. I hate to put brush cutters out of business, but buckthorn is, you know, pretty tough.
There is enough of it.
We can share with the goats.
Yeah, with the other part of the buckthorn, we're not only planning on, um, having them help out the school forest. The reason why it's probably gonna take about three years to get, um, all of our stuff ready is that we're planning on renting them out also. And so that'd be another aspect of it that would help our students develop their SAE. There's also things in FFA called proficiency awards that you can fill out. And, uh, so that's another thing where you would need that financial component of it.
Yes. Chase is over there like, wow, what'd I get myself into? You've been doing this a long time. You've been showing beef cattle a long time, buddy. Are you, are you gonna show another steer again this year?
This year I will not be showing FFA, uh, my last year I'll try to do that, but this year I'll be showing with Schultz.
Okay. Lots of good, lots of good things happening. I like the chickens, the new chickens and the hazel, hazelnut thing, that's a, that's kinda neat. I like, did you call them chunnels?
Yeah.
Did you, that's, that's kinda cool. I wanted to write that word down, a tunnel for the chickens. And eggs are a precious commodity right now, so, good lie, I hope you get a lot of eggs. Are you planning on, are we planning on being able to use those at school or selling them, or what are we gonna do with those?
Do we?
We haven't gotten that far yet.
I don't know if we've gotten that far, but-
We don't, we don't know yet.
Okay.
Let's see what happens.
Okay.
With them. But I, I just wanted to say that it's National FFA Week, and so, um, it's a perfect time to do this. I'm glad it worked out here. I'm just really proud of our kids and the things that they're doing. Statistics show that if you get kids to learn about entrepreneurship programs and learn to make their own businesses, uh, that they're more likely to stay in your community. Uh, we started this program with that thought in mind, and, uh, I think that it's, that, that is actually occurring here. You know, kids are, are taking it to the next level. Uh, and she's not lying about the goats, she takes care of, you know, 7:30 at night, she's coming in. And even on the weekends, you know, they're there, you know, Darby and, and Sukie have been a part of that. It's really, um, an amazing program that, uh, that, you know, they have really taken charge of, which is really exciting for me. And, uh, I think that, uh, there's a lot of value in what we're doing. I wanna thank the school board for, uh, allowing us to do these kinds of things. I, you know, it really does make a difference. Um, building leaders for the future has always been our motto, and, uh, and I, I believe we, that's what we do. Um, hear these kids talk today, I'm just so impressed. We didn't, we didn't even talk about what we were gonna talk about today. So it's really, uh, I'm super proud of these kids, so.
Well, you don't have to talk about what you're gonna talk about if you're walking it every day. And this is literally life experience that's happening here, and you guys do a great job out there. And next year, weaned goats.
What'd you say?
Weaned goats. No bottle feeding goats next year, just give them a wean.
Well, the bottle feeding's kinda fun.
I know, yeah, it's gonna be hard.
Kids like it a lot.
Yes, yes. Um, fantastic job you guys done, and thanks for the donuts. Thanks for, thanks for braving the cold with the donuts. All right, moving along to the consent agenda items.
You, you guys don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to.
There's so much. I was gonna tell them, but they're like, like sat down and looked at me like, we wanna hear the rest, but apparently they didn't. I know.
Don't have to go feed the goats.
I have to go feed the goats, go feed the goats, guys. I had consent agenda items due to Steve being under the weather tonight. I filled in for him. So Steve, when you get back, I'm expecting a, a payback on that. So, uh, everything looked great, had a couple of questions for John, answered those. Uh, with that, I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda items as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say no. Motion passed. The consent agenda items are approved. Uh, next, moving on to the admin reports.
All right, at the high school, um, we're coming off a busy couple-week stretch here. We had our annual snow week festivities a couple of weeks ago. It's a nice way for us to break up that long stretch between Christmas and the spring, especially in Wisconsin where it's cold and gives the kids something fun to do. And we incorporated a reward day that was very successful. Kids had a good time, staff came back rejuvenated as well. Um, last week we had our, um, conferences at all the buildings. Um, at the high school, we focus on what we call academic and career planning conferences, um, picking out schedules, but also talking about state assessments, test scores, and then potential careers and college choices. So we try to make it as practical as possible, and those have been very successful over the years. Uh, coming up, we've got, we're coming up on the end of our winter sports season here. So playoffs are starting, seedings have happened. Um, our, our boys won the inaugural Middle Border Conference Hockey Championship tourney, the first time that happened. Uh, this past Saturday, triple overtime game, so that was, that was really exciting down in Altoona. Um, we have our ACT bootcamp day for ninth through 11th graders on February 27th. We put a lot of, we're putting a lot of effort in, hopefully it pays off. March 3rd, we had a motivational speaker by the name of Terrence Tally. He's coming to speak to all of the buildings. Uh, he'll use the high school gym, but he'll meet with each building individually. We're excited to hear his message. And then March 11th, we have the first of our state assessments, our juniors will be taking their ACT on March 11th. And then ninth and 10th graders will be approximately a month later.
Okay, at the middle school, we are busy going through our student individual goals. We'll be going through our second round of goal setting where the students start talking about ways that they want to, uh, things they wanna work on for self-improvement. Our sixth grade quiz bowl has their finals on Wednesday. So the two final teams, uh, I think there were six teams that are breaking down to the finals, so that should be pretty fun. They get pretty excited about that, so I'll go in and watch and cheer them on. Our genius hour has kicked off a couple of weeks ago, and they're busy working on setting up their individual driving questions for their research. And, um, that will culminate on our genius hour expo on May 9th. On Thursday, while we were at conferences, our students were working on, uh, our band enquirer kids are up at the middle school solo ensemble. And they had an outstanding, a standing night. I was, um, even though I wasn't there 'cause I was, I was at conferences, but, uh, the results came back and they just did phenomenal. I wanna really shout out to Mateo Azapir and Camille Kastanik. Uh, there were three choir judge rooms for the choir groups, and, uh, we took best in show or best in room of all three of those rooms. One was Mateo, one was Camille, and the third room just happened to be Mateo and Camille doing a duet. So, um, pretty amazing. We have a winter dance coming up on February 20th. Our middle school lockdown drill that we had initially scheduled, uh, at the end of January got moved to the end of February. And so, um, I've been working with Amory Police Department on that, and we will be doing that drill Tuesday morning after, um, next week, what, you know, communicating quickly with the parents on what we're doing. And then, um, we have, uh, a presentation to go through with the kids pre and post. Uh, Josh mentioned the youth live presentations, we're excited to hear Terrence Tally that morning on March 3rd. March 7th is the end of the second trimester, so that's pretty exciting. The year is moving through, and we're almost two-thirds done. And our sixth grade, uh, will have a, will be competing at the Math Masters competition, so a lot going on at the middle school.
All right, good evening. A lot going on at the intermediate school. So we recently, as an entire building, read the book called The Wild Robot. A movie was newly released, and so every staff member in this building read The Wild Robot, and then we read it out loud to our students as well. Um, after that reading incentive, we actually celebrated by going to the high school and watching the movie on the big screen. So thank you to Annie Brighton for arranging that, all of our staff for reading the book, and then also to the high school for letting us use the auditorium as our personal theater for that day. Our IPO hosted our winter ball, which was very well-attended. I wanna thank the IPO, but then also thank our Miss Amory royalty, they come and, and spend the evening with us, and we really appreciate that. Our students are really excited to see them. Um, we had a career fair, and so it looked bigger and better than it probably ever has. We welcomed 17 community members, um, who came into the classrooms. And so each third, fourth, and fifth grader got to sign up for multiple sessions that they were interested in learning a career about. Um, the feedback from kids was a lot of excitement and a lot of exposure to new careers that they had never even known had existed. So, um, I just really wanna thank our community members for that 'cause that was fantastic for our kids. Um, Eau Claire Children's Theater, so the Eau Claire Children's Theater does a traveling show, and so as part of one of our PBIS rewards, um, we use that, um, to reward our students for a, a great term of behavior. So all of, our building went over there and watched, um, The Three Little Pigs. We had our fourth annual Love Year Library Night, so that's hosted by our library and AR reading committee here. Um, very well-attended, um, students and parents get to see the maker space, um, do some scavenger hunts, read some different books, and then do some author talks as well, and the public library comes, and so our students can sign up for library cards and they can win some books. So I wanna thank our committee for that, and then also the public library for coming. Um, our annual Iditarod presentation, so our fourth graders do a unit or a theme right now on the Iditarod and the dog sled race. And so we always welcome Laura Wycheck, um, to come, and, and she brings in, um, one of the sleds. She usually brings in a dog, and then really just talks about what the experience is 'cause she lived it firsthand, and our students get really excited about that. Um, as Josh mentioned, parent-teacher conferences, um, we also host our art fair at that time. And so when our parents come to parent-teacher conferences, um, they get to just appreciate the student artwork that lines our hallways as well. And then in terms of what we have coming up, everything that Josh and Tom have already shared outside of, we also have our IPO family bingo night, which is a great fundraiser for our building as well. Thank you.
Okay, we just celebrated the 100th day of school last week, Tuesday. Uh, shout out to the staff for creating all sorts of fun activities for our kids involving the number 100. Uh, shout out especially to my favorite, which was Amy Eastep, where the kids in her kindergarten class popped 100 balloons in about 30 seconds. But the only drawback was she didn't tell any of her neighbors that it was happening, so people were a little surprised by how loud it was. So, it was a very fun day at the elementary. Uh, if you want to know when the next spell of cold leather will be, all you have to do is ask us when we're going to Trollhagen. We're on to our third try. We're supposed to go tomorrow morning, and I don't think that would make for fun tubing, going down the hill with that kind of temperature. So now we're on to trying to reschedule again. We're looking at Monday, so Monday we might have a snow day apparently. No, I think it's gonna be pretty decent. Parent-teacher conferences, we had near-perfect attendance at the elementary last week, Monday and Thursday. Lots of good conversation. 4K orientation, I know we're talking April now, but April will be upon us rather soon, so April 25th. And not to steal any thunder from Jessica, we're gonna be doing our K-12 social studies curriculum, or you'll hear all about that next month. Upcoming activities, we got second grade art show in choir and first grade art show in choir. This is new. We are seeking to do an art show at the elementary in combination with a concert and doing that during the day because it's often hard to get folks to see the art that kids are doing unless they're going to an event where it can be seen 'cause it's typically inside school or inside of a classroom, so we're creating a, um, art show. We have no school on the 18th, which is Good Friday, Earth Day, and then 4K orientation.
Good evening. Um, we have our Child Development Day coming this Thursday. Um, this is the second one we've held this year, um, trying to transition to a spring child development instead of a fall child development, just to line up with the ages. Um, thank you to First Lutheran Church and, um, Amory here who have graciously offered and are, um, letting us host it there so that we have, um, enough rooms to be able to meet our families and, um, visit with the children. We have up to eight students, or eight kiddos that will come see us, so, which is a higher number than I was expecting, so that's very exciting. Um, and then we also have our group, um, we are participating in CISA's, uh, PLC Behavior Solutions training. We had a team go in October and, for two days, and now our third day is coming up here. And we'll return to CISA, um, looking at how our tier support looks for behaviors for, um, different ages, so should be a good day.
How many kiddos did you say were coming to child development?
Eight.
Eight.
Eight. Yeah, and this is the second time this year now, so-
Okay.
That number's higher than I thought, but, um, that's great. Super excited to meet some new families, so.
Perfect. Any questions for the administrators? Okay. Off to the achievement gap report, uh, for our spring, and that will be done with, uh, Dr. Durfler and this is Dambrosia.
Jessica's gonna lead us through this, but this is a new, um, format rather than doing the consecutive slides. All of the slides in the past say the exact same thing, the numbers changed. So we put the exact same thing on the one slide, and the numbers change when you see fall semester progress in that second-to-last column. That's where you'll see the information that probably matters the most. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica, and she's gonna walk us through it.
Sure. So here we are in February talking about fall benchmark scores. Um, we actually just got done with our winter benchmark score, so I just wanna remind you that as we review this, um, that we actually fast bridge, that's the screener we use, we fast bridge our students the second week of school. Um, the reason why we follow that timeline is that really sets the tone of what do we need to do for our kids following summer slide.
The reason why we follow that timeline is that really sets the tone of what do we need to do for our kids following summer slide. It immediately helps us guide who's getting title groups, what are our RTI groups look like. The fast bridge data we receive is very, very helpful as we help our students. And so, when we look at, we look at K-1, 2, and 3, so intermediate schools, just a little sliver of it. K in 1, they use different assessments than second and third grade. So for kindergarten and first grade, we use the screeners Early Reading English and Early Math. And then, when our students transition into second and third grade, we actually use Fast Bridge A-Reading and A-Math. So they're, they're very different screeners. When we look at our kindergartners in the fall, our goal is to have 80% of our students at or above the 30th percentile. 80% is a lofty goal. I know a lot of districts do 75 or 70%. We go with 80 because a lot of research in reading curriculums and reading specialists share with us that if you have a tier one resource, so our reading curriculum, it should target and meet the needs of 80% of our students. So, we use a lofty goal of 80% to know that we're using a curriculum with fidelity that's meeting the news, meeting the needs of all of our learners. So looking at kindergarten, when we screened our students in the fall, 89% of our students were at or above the 30th percentile. When we look at math in kindergarten, 84% of our students are at or above the 30th percentile. In first grade reading, 74% in the fall were at or above the 30th percentile in mathematics. 79% of our students were at or above the 30th percentile, and then we shift to second grade. So again, in second grade, the students are using a different test, so it's actually a computer adaptive test. So with students, all students start at the same baseline, but as they progress through the assessment, the assessment increasingly gets harder and concepts differ. So it's, it's a new test for our students in the fall when they come to us. So in the fall, our second graders, 61% were at or above the 30th percentile. In mathematics, 74% were at or above the 30th percentile. And then, when we look in third grade, we had 59% at or above the 30th percentile in reading. And then, in mathematics, we had 80% at or above the 30th percentile. Mr. Dierflehr and I and Carrie Schuh is our reading, our district reading specialist, spend a lot of time talking about these numbers, a lot, a lot of time looking at these numbers. And again, we just re-screened our students approximately three weeks ago. And so, I have access to that and I will say we're making, we're making some really nice gains with our students. When we talk about what are we doing to meet, meet the needs of our students? We have smaller class sizes, we have really robust Title I services, we have really great tier one resources, and a really broad menu of tier two resources to meet the needs of our students. Do you guys have any questions on this, or Sean, did I miss anything?
No, I think you did great.
So the 80% never changes, so we're always looking for that, even in the spring, right? We're looking for that 80% to still test above or at the 30th percentile. How did this, these numbers look a little lower than I'm used to seeing, even in the fall? So how did that, obviously our kindergartners is not going to play into this, but how did that look from like what we met in the spring? With like our first graders, second graders? Do we, because they don't have last year's numbers in front of me, so I usually try to compare those. I didn't, for some reason, I didn't have that. But, did we see a lag? Because these numbers look a little lower than I'm used to. From, so from grade level that we, like we met that and then, you know, like in first grade, but then we didn't meet it in second grade, is that accurate or not?
There's always different trends that play into this. So right, we try to follow a student cohort to see how they're trending over line, but then we also follow at a grade level, how are they trending? So we know where we need to give our resources. So for example, if we have a first grade class that's really struggling, we will pivot our Title I sources more to first grade. We'll go heavy in first or heavy in third, wherever it is, to try to make up those gaps. Research shows by third grade, we have to be closing those gaps. So I will say when we, we look at the scores, it's very similar to what we, what we usually see. And so, that's why I, I have the fall to winter scores and those are some nice trends, but I would say it's, it's very similar to what we see. I reflect a lot on this building when I think of third grade reading and math. And so, when I see where we're at for the winter to where we were in the fall, we talk a lot about that implementation, implementation dip is what it's called. So we're in year three of HMH, and so we've seen our, our scores steadily increase forward. We see our scores look really solid, so I'm, I'm really happy that we have a great tier one resource that's meeting the needs of 80% of our, our students. The other thing I consider in this building when I look at third grade in particular is just I was very transparent about the behaviors we were dealing with when they came to us. Is, is a lot of our focus shifted to teaching these students how to go to school and what the expectations were of the learning environment. So we spent a lot of time focusing on that. When I look at that third grade and even that second grade cohort right now, I really like the trends that, that I'm seeing. So I'm, I'm anxious for spring scores. The most growth in students happens by far January, February, March, and April because that's when they're, they're now applying all the knowledge that they learned in the fall and really taking off. So, that to me is the most exciting time then.
I was just wondering if there was like a dip that we saw in these fall scores from where they were at the year prior?
I can get that through you.
Is it, you know, is it something like that? Or was there not a dip so much at all, I'm just thinking?
Not a huge dip, but I will say the summer leg is, is a big part of it. We actually, as administrative team, but then also teachers, just put in recommendations for summer school to Laura Shogren. And so, this actually will be year two that we have a summer school reading curriculum. So it was purchased two years ago, it's called 95%. I vetted it, it, it is a great tool for our kids to try to close that gap. So I'm, I'm excited that we're really meeting the needs of our kids and purchasing and investing in resources to help close those gaps because summer slide is a real thing. Ask any teacher what scores look like in the fall versus in the spring.
Did we have good participation? I'm sorry to cut you off there, Tom, but before I forget this, did we have good participation in the summer school reading program last year? As, as the first year, are we expecting maybe to get better this year? Is there more going to be referred to this year than last?
So I would say, I looked at numbers, K-5, and, and our numbers are very similar. Our teachers are very good about putting in any student they have concerns. The next steps then is parent recommendation letters go home, and so then ultimately it's up to a parent to sign up their child. Participation last summer, I think was good. I, I would absolutely ask that of Laura, she could give us the numbers. I do know what Laura did last year was really, the class sizes were small, so the ratios were smaller versus one teacher having 18 kids. At, at one point, I taught summer school like that, our, our section sizes, she tries to keep them around, you know, 12, 12 to 15, which is really helpful.
Okay, sorry, thanks. Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, no, I would just say, you know, the summer, we see the summer leg too. I mean, we, we fast bridge from, you know, spring even for the eighth graders.
Yes.
And, and summer school helps for some kids, but yeah.
Are, is the data the same whether or not we were using HMH or the previous curriculum?
You know what, Joe, I have not compared that, just my first year was the year that we purchased HMH. So I, I can go back and I could definitely look. We have had fast bridge for probably about eight years, so the data would be there to be able to look back and see where we were scoring. I could do that.
I mean, I don't want to waste your time, is that valuable?
I think there's a lot of factors that's going to factor in with that instead of just curriculum. I think we, the numbers have went down clearly in the last seven years. It's been a trend downward a little bit, but I don't think that curriculum is the biggest reason why. I think there was just a lot of learning loss with the COVID situation and then getting kids back. And I think behaviors have been a, a driving factor there too. I just think that there's going to be, I don't think you can point at one singular thing. Although, at this point, we don't really have a choice because we have to, with Act 20, we, 20, right? We have to teach the science of reading, and this was the curriculum that we chose to go into this, and thank God we did. Otherwise, we would have been spending money on a whole nother curriculum.
And like you're saying, there's so many variables when it comes to our kids, right? You know, kids in and out, what that looks like, you know, special education referrals at what point in their academic career. The things that we've done and even the trends that we've seen across education is now it's a mandate for science of reading. So we've invested a lot of money, a lot of time into our K-3 teachers being trained in the science of reading. We use top 10 tools. It is amazing to go, as a, as a, as a former first grade teacher, it's amazing to go into a first grade or second grade classroom and see our students using words like dip thongs, open syllables, closed syllables. They're saying them. My second year, my second grader Harper comes home and she's like, Mom, that's a closed syllable, that's an open. And those are things that, you know, just, just the language. So, when you know better, you do better. So part of our HMH curriculum has something called structured literacy in it, and it is science of reading based. So it, it, it's a beautiful tool that we have that's embedded in, in K-2's day, every single day. Sharon, when you ask about summer school, I will tell you, next summer, part of Act 20 says that our students that have personalized reading plans must have access to high-quality curriculum and instruction in summer school. So I've already kind of planted that seed with Laura to say this summer looks very similar, but when we look to next summer, we have to make sure that we have those summer school resources for our students.
That's what, kind of where I was wondering about the participation and how that's looking, so.
I guess the other, the other aspect of that is, you know, it's what we can influence, I guess. But, the other question, for the, the test that you do and we get all these numbers, that's why I was asking about the data itself, is because I think since 2012, I think they actually kind of lowered the threshold of test scores with the ones you use about three different times, for whatever reasons.
They've lowered them and raised them, raised them and lowered them.
They have, yeah.
They went up, they went up considerably, they went up considerably than they initially were. Like, like considerably higher, because they nape, they put them under the Nape standard. And then they came off the Nape standard, now they're going allegedly, and expect them to go back to the Nape standard here this year again, which will be hard to produce some.
Yeah, it just seems confusing to collect data for me over a time period.
Oh, especially when they change the test for ninth and 10th graders every three years.
Now, the scores don't really change, just what they're saying, what percentage would be considered proficient, but the scores itself. So that's why we look at a scale score, which is a, which won't matter where standard you're using. The scale score will be consistent, so we look at trends over that. So we break those scores down like 20 different ways to take, and looking for growth, but, you know. And I think for like HMH, typically they're saying you need three years of consistency before you can really do a trend. And so, and you know, we'll be able to take a look after the third year of HMH and see not only with fast bridge, but I think with the state test scores, what percentage of where the kids are falling on a scale score will tell us a lot. So we, we can get around that, with that, you know.
And we did roll that out during COVID. That was the first year that we implemented that, right?
This is year three for us of HMH, next year will be year four.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Any, any other questions on that?
I just had a question in regards to the Montessori students and how they're tested if they're in a 1 through 3 classroom.
So they follow the same assessments that, that are our traditional third graders do. So they take the same battery of assessments. The ones that we use for AJR report is A-Reading and A-Math, but there are other ones, automaticity, CBM rating. So there's a, several more of them. It's about five that our students take in fast bridge. Oh, yes, sorry, if that's what you were asking, go ahead. Our first graders in the multi-age room take the first grade assessments with the same as the traditional, and then our second grade take the same in third and so on.
All right, thanks, Josh. All right, off to our informational items. WASB State Convention Update, Mr. McBride.
Yeah, so there was four of us that went this year. Tracy Hendrickson, George Sigsworth, Gretchen Wahlberg, and myself. This is arguably one of the better, you know, kind of state conventions of the year. Lot of breakout sessions, a lot of different tracks. Really what I'll just speak to is kind of the four main bullet points of the tracks that I were on. The first one is a lot of conversation about the biennial budget. It's a biennial budget year, and so it's what's the superintendent's asked, versus what's the state's asked, versus what's the governor's ask and that sort of thing. And I, I'm hopeful that at least some of what has been asked of the state will get passed, especially considering that the special education categorical reimbursement percentage for this year is estimated to only come across as 25%, which is, which means that 75% of special education costs are being siphoned off of our regular ed that the district then legally has to put over into special education. So, a big ask for the state this year is to increase that number to 66%, which would be great, especially with a little bit of question mark of what's going to happen with the federal side of things. You know, really that's going to be more of a necessity than it's going to be a luxury for our, our population and ultimately our budget. Some of the other asks, increasing the low revenue limit ceiling would also be really great as well as a per pupil categorical across the board increase would be fantastic as well because that would have a direct impact on our individual tax base. Another one was a lot on getting creative with benefits for staff members. And I'm happy to say that all the ones that I sat through and that Gretchen sat through, we are actually exceeding what they are telling us that we should be doing, which is fantastic. There was a big emphasis on EAPs, as we've talked about in the past, and it's something that's on my focus list as well, as a model, what they're calling now an Enhanced Employee Assistance Program, which is actually something that's subsidized by the school district but mostly covered by our insurance companies. So, a lot of good conversation there. Lot of great conversations as well about declining enrollment statewide. Statewide, the per pupil or on a total, total standpoint, it's about 21,000. And what the both state demographer and the WASB demographers are relating that to is mostly what they call natural, natural declination, which is just more deaths than births. And some of it is also attributed to shifting populations around what states they're in. And then finally, there was also a lot of topics from the finance perspective on how to better communicate with the public about all of the craziness that's going on with the state and all that sort of stuff. So, overall, it was a fantastic convention, and, you know, like I said, it's always a good one.
Any questions for John? Okay, thanks, John. Moving on then to first reading of Board Policies. 430 Student Participation in Foreign Study Programs.
Okay, this would be, sorry, this would be an amended policy. 430.2 was first passed in 2010, so here we are 15 years later. In my experience, since I've been here in 19 years, no student has ever availed themselves of this opportunity, which is for a student that lives and goes to school in the school district of Amory to go to another country and attend school as a foreign exchange student there. So going the other direction, so to speak. The language changes are simply making it more modern as to what we do at the high school. It was, some of the language was simply obsolete. Having met with Josh and High School Guidance, these were the recommended changes from that meeting that were created by High School Guidance. And if a student wanted to avail themselves of this opportunity, which it sounds like we have a prospective candidate for that, then we would have updated language and they could do that. So you'll see this here tonight, and then you'll see it again in March for a second reading. Rather than me walk through every bit of the changes, you've seen it with your own eyes. If you have any questions, Josh or I can help, I hope.
We really align the new language just to go with what we see other districts doing in the state. And, yeah, like, like Dr. Dierflehr said, we haven't had a whole lot of requests for this over the years. And there's a family inquiring right now, it's, you know, quite a spendy endeavor. The big thing from this is, you know, we just want to make sure that if a student does take the opportunity to do this, that they're still staying on some sort of a track to be able to graduate. And they have to have official transcripts for us. It's, it's, it's kind of no different than if a student were to transfer to us from Osceola Sanca Falls. You know, we have to go through the transcripts and see how it aligns. So it, that's basically what this is saying.
Any questions on policy 430.2? All right, policy 830, Use of District Facilities.
Well, there are a variety of policies that are out there that already exist. This policy is, as it's titled right in the top right corner, is a new combined policy. Because you'll see there are four or five pages where it simply says eliminate, which means these policies would, would be eliminated and consolidated into one place. We are in a different spot now than we've ever been in regards to the use of our facilities for a couple of reasons. One, then the requests we get are more varied now than they have ever been. We have a lot of different people needing to use or wanting to use our facilities for reasons that just didn't exist five, 10, 15 years ago. And in addition to that, we now have an upgraded athletics facility where people are going to perhaps be interested in using that facility. We've already received some inquiry on that. So, the time to create a new policy which addresses that is now. Tracy is the one that put pen to paper and, or pencil to paper at this point, and authored new policy combining language from previous policy to create what you see here for policy 830. We're just trying to be prepared. to be prepared with the next request. And the next request is right around the corner.
I have a question.
Yes.
I haven't seen, but you know, I know that one point there was some costs listed down, what it would cost to rent it. Is, did I miss that on the new?
Nope. We didn't include the cost because the cost is, is gonna be quite varied. For instance, if someone wanted to come in to use our auditorium and they wanted to pack the house for six hundred people and twenty-five dollars, thirty-five dollars a ticket, and all it cost them is two hundred dollars to rent the facility, that seems pretty inequitable when they're gonna be taking home ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars. So we didn't include the cost for that very reason.
Okay.
So it's gonna depend on what you wanna do.
It's a sliding scale.
It is. And the same is true for athletic facilities. It really comes down to the laws of supply and demand. If you really wanna play a baseball game, there's not a lot of spots to play in April. I mean, most fields are underwater or just too soft to play. Ours will be ready to roll, we hope. So there's that too.
Have we had people asking about baseball field?
Mm-hmm. Yep. And, and our soccer football field as well. Soccer in this case.
Yep. Okay.
Much of the information that you see on the eliminated pages would be things that would be pulled out of policy and instead put on the website for the public to be able to see. We don't necessarily need to have pricing and policy. And then every time we wanna change the pricing, we're back at a board meeting with two readings to get it changed. So that was some of the thought process behind some of the things that you see eliminated. Auditorium etiquette, you know, rules of how to use the fields, what you can and can't do. Those kinds of things would be on the website and available to those people that would wanna use the facilities rather than in policy and having, if we wanna change it, then it's just a lot more effort to do that when it's in policy, when there are really guidelines that could be on the website.
I just look back, I was here in ninety-nine and I had, there was a wedding in my building. And that was, that initially changed some of the, of the, this, some of this policy was put into place because, um, they, it was a, it was a staff member, not from the middle school, but from another building who, one worked in the kitchen and one worked as a custodian. They had, they were family members of this couple. And then for like twenty-five dollars, they had a three hundred person wedding using our kitchen and every plate, the gym, the whole place, kinda left it in shambles for me. And it was like.
The ceremony was here or the reception?
The actual, no, the wedding, everything. The wedding was held at.
Where in the middle school to do the ceremony?
Gym.[1086.14][1086.35][laughter] And then, and then they had the middle school cafeteria.
I guess to each their own.
Hashtag liberalization.
Okay.
Just, I know, so they, they were, you know.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Were they middle school sweethearts or something? Fell in love there?
No, I don't know. I don't know.
[laughing] Sentimental reasons there?
Nothing says romance like the middle school, I guess.
That's probably true. All right. Any questions or, uh, suggested changes at this point for policy eight thirty? Kid okay. Moving on then. Action items. Second reading of board policy.
I have some questions on the next, since we're talking about informational items. And I was just wondering if I could bring up possibly where to bring up our next informational items? Are you good with that?
I guess I don't, I, I don't understand the question.
Okay. So I was just looking at what are we gonna look at next for informational items for next policies of next month and the, the month after?
I haven't even begun to create the agenda.
That's on there, yeah.
But if you have a suggestion.
Well, I just wanted to, I don't know if maybe you guys are all aware. I received an email. Um, I don't know if any of you also did about an executive order for President Trump about the removal of DEI related topics. Um, and, you know, and we have DEIs, you know, diversity, equity and inclusion stuff in regards to, I mean, it almost feels like culture here. But I mean, within our curriculum, our policy and our testing and, um, and I think he gave the state like fourteen days to comply. Um, and I would just wanted to make you aware of that. And obviously I think it has to go to the state first and then to districts. Um, obviously I hope we comply. I know it's a lot, if you don't, it, obviously the, the thing is, is you won't get federal funding, which is why I asked John earlier about how much federal funding we get. It's about a million dollars. So, um, I just wanted to make you aware. Maybe that's something that we should be looking at over the next month here. Cause I think it was on Valentine's Day when the executive order went out.
The timeline's a little longer than that to my knowledge. I believe it's, uh, ninety days that you have to comply with, though I could be wrong. Here's the guidance that I've received from the Department of Public Instruction and up to and including today. They said to hold firm on executive orders until the Department of Public Construction via the state legislature weighs in. And my hunch is there's gonna be conflict between existing state law and Department of Public Construction policy and executive order. And the final summation was this is gonna end up before judge or judges to determine what you are supposed to do. And then at that point, you should probably seek to change policy if it's ferreted out that that's what you need to do. I'm getting an update daily, if not more than once a day in regards to executive orders. The state's done nothing with any of them. Cause executive order has, ultimately has no teeth. It's the law that does. And the state legislature's gonna have to determine law or the federal government via this, in the Supreme Court, they're gonna have to determine what's law. And that hasn't happened yet.
And I believe Congressman Tiffany brought that up also.
Yep. They have to, they have to weed it all out, so to speak. Cause there are, the, the language is simply contradictory and you, you can't have contradictory law. Some, some, one's gonna preside and the other's gonna go away at some point.
Okay. Well, obviously I just want, it's just like informational. I just wanna make, you're up, you're completely aware of it. So, um, yeah, just thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Aware of it, yeah, under, aware of it, yes. Understand. Uh, I haven't gotten my head around it. I don't think anyone has. Cause it's just so much conflicting language. I'm not saying it's good or bad. It's just contradictory. So we just gotta figure out where we sit. And someone's gonna have to tell us where we sit.
I think it's always been the position of this, this board and this administration to follow the law. Um, and we'll do that when the law takes effect. And, uh, other than that, uh, it'd be a waste of time to try to go through and figure out exactly what we need to do if we don't need to do it. So, um, I think that's, it's always been kinda the position of this administration. So is there anything else you wanted to add for informational items then? Do we need to add that to an agenda? I wouldn't see us putting that on until we know anything more.
I think we need to have some more knowledge with it. Obviously I, you know, again, I think it coincides with, you know, I, I surely hope the ultimate result is truly, you know, equality. Um, but we'll see.
Okay. All right. Action item. Second reading of policy four twenty, rule, school admissions guidelines.
Uh, there's no change from last month to this month. This month, the only change is on the back of the sheet. And then February seventeenth, uh, number six is in red. That's the only thing that's been, that's still there, so to speak.
These are changes that had occurred out of the last couple of months that we've been talking about this?
Yes.
And is there any discussion or changes that anybody wants to see that's still not right? Is there a motion to approve policy four twenty?
I'll make a motion when we approve policy four twenty as presented.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve policy, uh, four twenty rule as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving policy four twenty rule as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Policy four twenty rule has been approved. And donations to the district.
And the song remains the same. We've got a lot of donations to the district, starting with a anonymous donation of two thousand dollars for each of our four music teachers to purchase items on their wish lists. Uh, we have two pump donations, cause as you know, there's been a business transaction that's resulted in a change in ownership of the Amory Express downtown. So the leftover from the last ownership is three hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. New ownership, eight hundred and fifty-seven oh nine. What has occurred, what has occurred typically is about twelve hundred dollars every quarter. So it's been just shy of five thousand dollars a year. It's simply under a new title now. So I went and picked up two checks and now I'll probably just pick up one again.
And new ownership is continuing to.
They're, they're, they're gonna honor that, uh, pump the way they have been doing it since, uh, Doug Reinhardt back in the day started doing that thing. So they haven't changed a thing.
Really nice.
Which is awesome.
Yeah, really nice.
Bizarrely consistent.
It's very consistent.
But you know, people have like their favorite gas stations, their favorite, you know, like people are creatures of habit. So.
You're talking every time we get a check, it's been a dollar or two.
Very strange. Uh, Napa Auto Parts. Thank you to Tom Miller of Napa Auto Parts for donating brake pads, calipers, wheel bearings and rotors to our home and auto maintenance class. Uh, thank you to Silas Larson for making the fixtures in which these parts are mounted. Elda Hanson, thank you for donating forty-five Valentine packs with crayons, coloring books and snacks for students at Lean Elementary. And many thanks for your generosity and support once again.
I just wanted to quickly talk about the anonymous donor on page one, uh, just as a testament to the people around this area. It's a couple who is not originally from here, whose kids graduated from school in a different state, uh, who just follow our Facebook page and love the things that are going on with our music programs and wanted to bless each of the four music teachers with five hundred dollars to kinda go crazy with something fun and, and exciting for their, their kids. And they just don't want any fame or notoriety from it. But it was a very welcome email to be sending to those four teachers who I think we can all say definitely deserve it after the successes of our music programs.
Yeah. Super cool. Lots of, lots of cool things. It just never ceases to amaze me. Like the variety of things that get donated to the district of like such a great asset. You know, like Tom's back from the brink of death and opened a, a new auto parts store in town. And, you know, he's obviously sees the value in, uh, kids learning how to do their home and, home and auto maintenance and just really, really cool things happening here at the school district and the community just supports it. And it's always, it's always really cool to see. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
I'll make that motion.
Joe, second by Gwen. It's been properly moved and seconded to accept the donations to the school district, uh, with many thanks. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the donations to the district, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. I can't imagine anybody would. Thank you very much. And another shout out to our community.[1696.56][1696.56][applause] All right. And off to personnel action.
All right. No employment and extracurricular contracts. Emily Ammons said is a JV softball coach. Antonio, Antonia Berger in clubhouse. Raimy Dodge, special ed para. Sandy Johnson, clubhouse worker. Felicia Osborne, school nutrition food server. Amelia Tanner, special ed para. McKinley Wise, school psychologist with the asterix meaning she starts in the fall of twenty-five. Misty Wishard, clubhouse worker. Resignations, uh, for Taylor Cast in the area of clubhouse. And a resignation, resignation that we are rescinding with your vote, Hannah Robinson, has a special ed para.
Do I have a motion to accept personnel action?
I'll make a motion when we accept the personnel.
Dale, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Joe, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the personnel action items as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. Personnel action is accepted. There's no reason to go into closed session, I don't believe. I don't think there's any community comments, right? I mean, there's only the two, Wop and two of you. So, okay, nobody signed up. Uh, there's no reason to go into closed session? Okay. Hearing none, then I will take a motion, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Gwen, is there a second?
Second it.
Joe, all those in favor to adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion passed. We're adjourned.